Yeah, I wouldn't like. Yeah, I wouldn't like. I'm gonna walk in and say, hey, Steve. I didn't want to miss that one. Tell you what, the best thing, there's James.
There he is right there.
Best thing I've ever done, put my spring system where I can control them from my home.
Really?
Yeah, we got there working on them. You can turn it on, turn it off, start it, turn it off.
Instead of going to the box.
Yeah, go back and forth to my house. The one that's in the house, the backyard, the new part in the house. Boy, that's the best thing in the world.
Thank you, sir.
You look tired.
Hey. Not hot out there, is it?
Four boxes of fish and a case of Frank's rice.
Outside?
Did he bring a plate or anything?
Yeah. We're tired.
Except the camp.
You just don't tell us?
Help yourself.
Hey, volunteered to cook at a church camp this week. Way to go, James.
There is a college world series big.
I wanna go one of them.
It's a homage, quite a place.
I would like to go to softball sometime in Oklahoma once again.
Yeah, six foot tall.
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner. All week.
Want to turn to the TV?
You got the pledge?
I can't.
You're gonna have to fix that clock up there. I'm gonna get shot when I do.
We need a remote control.
Hmm?
We need a remote control.
We need a digital. Digital. Is that what they call those things, atomic clocks? You still got two minutes?
I know, yeah. That's what I was looking at.
CFO of the hospital.
Look at him.
You will sign in.
CFO. They're talking about the evil. He representing, he representing Jill.
I don't think he knows it yet. He wanted to hear here for Jill. If you were here for Jill.
I said, you're representing Jill.
Always will.
Yeah.
How's she doing? She still in the boot?
Her pride will never be in the boot.
She walking okay?
Yeah.
She, she's. I heard a foul shot.
Oh, no.
That does not feel good.
Playing pickleball. Very meticulous. Some people think they're still at high school.
Yes, we do.
If you've not signed in, we'd appreciate if you'd sign in so we have a. We've got about thirty seconds and we'll start. You're gonna be the one to set that clock. I know you will. I got in trouble years ago letting a basketball game start early. When I was president of Little Dribblers. It was about halftime when the parents showed up and they were livid. I never allowed anything to start early again, so. There we are. It is time to start. This is a regular meeting for June nineteenth with Eastern City Commission. I'll lead the prayer and I've asked James to do the pledge. Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. We thank you for this great nation that we have the freedoms that we have, that we can come and meet like this on public assembly. We pray for the city and the decisions that we make will be the right decisions, Father, and they'll be to your glory. We continue to make this a great place to live and to, and to work and to play and to be, and we thank you, Father, for all that you do for us. We do lift Cecil Fundenberg up to you, Father, and pray for his health and his recovery, that he'll be well soon and back to doing the thing that he likes to do. For goodness of our sins, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. And if you haven't silenced your phones, I would ask you to do that at this time. I don't have anything for public comment. Approve the minutes of the May fifteenth meeting. You've got a copy of those in front of you and we'll entertain a motion.
We passed the minutes.
I'll take that.
Got a motion from Richard, a second from Charlie to approve the minutes for May fifteenth. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You approve, I'm sorry. Financial report?
We have April's financial report in the package. And, um. On your table is the sales tax for, uh, related sales tax report for the money we received in June. We actually took a little tiny dive in June. We were down point eighty-eight percent. But it still leaves us over for the year nine point seven five percent.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about the financial report? Or you can always call me if you have questions later.
Do they have any questions for, for last, they are for JJ? JJ? All right, thank you very much. We've got a presentation by Mr. Steve Gertis of the Eastern County Water Supply District. Steve, welcome, sir. That's fine. You can come up here, yeah.
Those of you that do not know me, I'm Steve Gertis, President of Eastland County Water Supply. I'd like to start off by thanking the City Commission, JJ. For last August, when we had our intake structure fail at the lake. You guys were real prompt in loaning us a diesel-fired water pump, six-inch water pump, and we used it pretty extensively in that project and some other things that JJ and Bobby sought to that we needed, that you provided. And I thank you for that. The Eastern County Water District is a member of the Texas Water Utilities Association of the Central West Texas District. They had a convention in Abilene and also a training classes for continuing education credits for the operators and Chad, our superintendent. Chad and the operators all attended that three-day schooling and while they were there, they entered some of our water in the water tasting contest. The counties that were represented in that were Callahan, Eastland, Calipeno, Chapelford, Stevens, and Taylor Counties. They have a water tasting judge that samples the water. Besides taste, they sample it for other things. And we wanted that. And I think that's the first time this has ever happened at the water district. We're kind of proud of that.
We are too. We are too.
Stuff like this. The guys at the plant, Chad will be there two years this coming month, first of July. Chad has been a real good addition to our team. Chad is very good at team building and leadership of that team. He holds the team to very high standards. Training, things like this on our new hires. We've completed, cleaned house out there with operators. Harry, our secretary is the only one remaining from before. And it was the best thing we ever did. We hired E X T Engineering through Scott Hay to oversee our day-to-day operations and also to train up our operators plus Chad. It's made them very proficient at what they do. We continually, and Don can attest to this, continually strive for excellence out there. And I think this is just one small step in that. It's our goal to make the district a district that others will try to emulate. And I think, I'd like to personally make our district, uh, set a setting example for other water supplies to try to attain and lead the pack, so to speak. But that's what I wanted to say.
Well, we appreciate you coming. I think that's great news. And you guys, one reason why I encouraged JJ to get you to come over here was, we hear a lot about the water and you guys have spent money and that's been passed on to our, our people and the helping pay for that and their water bill. And they need to know there's, we're not just wasting money. Uh, good things are happening and you guys, while the cost is going up, they're getting better water. I think that's really.
Yes, it's.
Appreciate it. You and Don, you guys, what you, I wonder why you're here tonight. You want to paddle back up there? We do appreciate. I know you guys meet every month and you fight that battle and there have been some plant failures and things you've got to do, deal with, renovations, and we appreciate, uh, what all you guys have done. Keep it going. We appreciate it.
Yeah, just a quick update. Uh, we're starting on our government land office grant, which I think you have a similar grant for the city. But, uh, we've let out contracts on the floating raw water pump station. And that had about a twenty-six or thirty-week lead time on the pumps and the stanchions for the pumps. But we'll do away with our old pump station on the back side of the dam. And, uh, we're awaiting parts or material for that project. Uh, they've subcontracted the new water line that will come off of it. It'll be a twenty-inch, uh, H D P pipe that'll go across our park at the dam and then under the peninsula on the north side of the dam and then reconnect into the line that we relocated in our dam spillway project. And, uh, then we'll be advertising for bids probably the month of July for the rest of that project. The rest of that project will be, we're gonna put the balance of the sheet pile wall on the upstream side of the dam. We did two sections of that. Uh, one in March, after that slip we had in March of two thousand eighteen, putting in two hundred and thirty foot. And then in our dam project, we did a hundred and fifty foot. While it's twelve hundred and fifty foot across the leading edge of that dam, we've got quite a bit yet to do. But we will do that. We're also going to do a vent system into our morning glory. You notice probably that when it floods, it belts its water out both ends of that morning glory. And that's because it funnels down from thirty-two-foot I D on the top of that morning glory down to eleven-foot conduit. Well, that creates a vacuum. And it can just hold so much pressure and something's gotta give and it gives out both ends. And that should alleviate that issue because when it does that, the ground shakes like a non-stop earthquake. And it has caused, uh, some minor issues with the conduit, which we will do those conduit repairs while we're doing that also. And, uh, I think that's the extent of that project. We'll be advertising for bid, it sounds like, in July of this year for the rest of that contract. We will sequence it. Because the board wants to have that floating raw water pump station in place and operate before we do that. Because we will do away, antiquate our inlet structure and the line going under the dam. That's already been slipped. That line had back in the nineties sometime. It had failed before and they slipped the line into it. And, uh, it's just a matter of time before it fails real good. And this will end that problem and it'll be a better quality of water that we'll get because we'll be getting the top water all the time with the flooded pumps.
We appreciate that. We know the difference. We feel the difference. Steve, thank y'all. Appreciate your board. Help me out. Thank you. Thank you very much. And next, from the East Memorial Hospital. Mr. Joe Wright. Would you like to talk about the ambulance service?
Uh, yes, sir. I'd like to set the stage. Then, uh, Ron will give the details. We've not had a price increase in the subsidies from the county, the city of Eastland, or the city of, uh, Cisco. In more than ten years, according to the county auditor. And anybody that knows what a dollar bill was worth ten years ago compared to what it's worth today knows that it's not making it great. So what Ron is gonna ask me for is a very serious increase. And what my purpose is, is I understand it's serious. But I think if we don't make you aware of our needs, we'll never get them addressed. And that's my part of the speech. And Ron has got all the data. If it's okay, I'd like to pass this out to y'all. Just follow along real quick.
Thank you. Thank you.
We can label them from season so you can have. Right number of copies. So what I've got here is some financial information and just an overview of how EMS works. So. We do get a large number of calls from ambulance services. The first page you can see, we actually have, uh, the calls that we receive. So we receive well over two thousand calls a year. That will be back up. This is two thousand eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three. And twenty-three is estimated because it's not finished yet. So first line represents the calls that we receive. And then the second line under that actually represents the calls that we can actually bill for. So there is a disparity there. Sometimes we're called out, uh, to render aid and there's really no reason for that. And so the ambulance will go out empty and come back empty as well. And so just kind of wanted to point that out that, uh, we always don't have somebody that we're transporting back from, from an accident. So I'm going to page two then. Second slide, you'll see, this is our yearly revenue on the top line. So from a revenue perspective, this is gross revenue. This is our charges. This is what we charge insurance companies and Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, whoever it might be. We average somewhere around two, two-point-eight million on a yearly basis. However, healthcare is a weird duck. Be the first to admit that. And we do not receive what we bill out. Actually, our contractual rate is about sixty-some-odd percent. So we basically get about thirty cents on the dollar for every dollar that we, uh, we bill out to insurance companies. So the second line, the one on the bottom, you'll see is actually our cash collection. So while we generate about two-point-eight million in revenue on a yearly basis, we're only getting about nine hundred thousand dollars back. If you go to page three, you'll see the issue that we have now. So in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, these two lines were close to each other. The top line is the expense line and the bottom line is the collection line. So two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, they were on top of each other, meaning we were about breaking even on our operations. And you can see in two thousand twenty, the year of COVID, we saw a decline in our volume. Expenses started to increase. And so you can see there's a deficit there. One line over the other line, our expenses are rising higher than our revenue is. And that's what we're here to talk about essentially, is what's happening on, um, graph number three. Just a quick note, if you would turn to page four. I mentioned earlier that we don't get, um, dollar-for-dollar return on the, um, revenue that we get, that we, uh, mail out or give to the insurance companies. This is the way it works. So. Ambulance services are reimbursed on a case rate basis. And so what I've got here are some codes that we bill insurance companies for. They're highlighted. It's the first five codes. So the way it works for an ambulance trip, we're about a mileage reimbursement. And then we're allowed to bill basically four codes. You can see them. It's A zero, two-four-five, two-four-six, two-four-seven, two-four-eight, and two-four-nine. Those are the approximate codes that we can bill insurance companies for. And to the right of that, you'll see another highlighted column. That's the reimbursement that we can expect for the codes that we have. So while we may charge seventeen, eighteen hundred bucks, we're gonna get four or five hundred dollars back is all we're gonna get. So an example of that, if you guys want to turn to page six. So our ambulance trips, for the most part, um, you take just an average trip, it's about eighteen, just over eighteen miles, um, round trip. So eighteen point one five. Under the Medicare. Page six, are you?
Page five-six, actually.
Yes. Looks like this right here. So with that, so. So the way that works, um, so our average trip is about eighteen miles round trip. We're allowed eight dollars and ten cents in reimbursement. So if you do the math, that's about a hundred and forty-seven dollars for the trip in terms of mileage. And then the other code that I mentioned, they average up to be about three hundred and seventy, forty-seven dollars. So if you take the one-seventy-four in mileage, the three-seventy-four in average charge, we get reimbursed about four hundred and ninety-four dollars a trip. This is the way ambulance works and this is Medicare reimbursement. Medicare is about sixty, sixty-five percent of our volume. So with that said, we've got a situation where, again, eighteen, nineteen, we were doing okay, but now our expenses have risen. So we're to the point now where our reimbursement is not enough to cover our expenses. And what we're seeing, if you'll turn to page seven. Is an income statement here showing the revenue that we generate. This is, uh, the last column is really the one we're looking at because it's annualized twenty, twenty-three. So we're generating about two-point-eight million. We're gonna take about one-point-six, almost one, or excuse me, one-point-nine, uh, almost two million off of that. So we're gonna be left with about eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in collections. And then you can see our expenses and our operating expenses are about one-point-three million. So we've got a deficit of about four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, uh, projected this year in EMS operations. So as Joe alluded to, we've got subsidies from the county, the city of Eastland, the city of Cisco, and the hospital, um, does a subsidy as well. So their, um, subsidies. Were eight-eight thousand for the county, Cisco, Eastland, the hospital are sixty-five thousand. So that totals up to almost three hundred thousand dollars and it still leaves us short, roughly about two hundred thousand dollars. And so what we're asking, when you look at our new expenses, uh, about one-point-three million dollars on page ten, I think. I'm hoping this has got the right presentation. So it's the one that looks like this. Yeah, I'm sorry. I think it's the last. Nine or ten, yeah. There may be one. So what we're asking for is a market adjustment. So currently, um. We've got expenses of about one-point-three million, collections of about eight hundred and fifty thousand, subsidy from the county of eighty-eight, Cisco and Eastland, and the hospital of sixty-five. That's not making it anymore. We don't have enough to cover the expenses. And so what we're asking for, again, is a big ask, as Joe mentioned, we're asking for a county subsidy to go to one-thirty-nine, uh, Eastland and Cisco and the hospital to go to one-oh-two.
When did you say it last went up?
So.
It's been this for a long time?
It's been over ten years. No one's exactly sure. I think it's been closer, closer to about twelve years since it's gone up. Now, in all fairness to y'all, because I want to be as honest as, as possible, we have two accounts that we've been maintaining that have EMS on them. The two accounts, one is a vehicle account. It has about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in, uh, leave. We have just recently gotten a new chassis for, for an ambulance. So we've been waiting for that chassis for well over a year. It was approved.
Last year.
Last year to get it. Uh, we have two ambulances. We were able to refurbish the first one. Now we're refurbishing the second one. That's gonna cost us about a hundred and sixty thousand to do that, so that a, uh, vehicle account will be down to about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand, which won't be enough to refurbish the next ambulance because they're running us about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand. But there'll be at least some money in there. And then we have a second account, which is like our checking account. It's got about five hundred thousand dollars in it. That's where the money comes in. It's where the money comes in for, um, the money that we receive from Medicare, Medicaid, subsidies and all. But like many of y'all know, checking accounts, you get paid, you get a large balance. As soon as you start writing your bills, the checking account falls. So we've got about five hundred thousand in there. We're gonna use up probably about two hundred thousand of it this year, covered the, the, uh, expenses that we had. It's gonna leave us about three hundred thousand dollars. And so history holds out. About this time next year is when that account will be probably empty.
Any other questions?
Well, you know I'm gonna ask this. We've talked about it, but they haven't heard it. Why haven't we done this incrementally over a longer period of time as opposed to just one?
You know, as well as letting butchers tie. I mean, for a little town, thirty-seven thousand's a, that's a, that's a, that's a big number.
You know, it's, it's a mistake and I, I'm, it's the only way I can look at it. That's why we're here though. Joe's new to the organization. I've been here three years. So. It's hard to say historically why we didn't do something. I proposed to the county last year, an increase that wasn't quite this bad. Uh, we were a little late in our request and was told that we probably wouldn't be able to get anywhere with that. So we were asked to come back to all the co-op partners this year. So in the three years that I've been here, this will be my second time, I mean, uh, first time here, but second time coming to the county, asking for that. Joe and I have talked about it extensively. We don't believe going forward, that's the right thing to do because it is a sticker shock for you guys. We're well aware of that. We think the right thing to do is to have a conversation with each of the co-op partners, at least yearly, if not every other year, to, uh, not have something like this where it's a fifty, sixty percent increase. So. Don't know that I can really answer it, other than the people that were here chose not to do it. And why they chose not to do it, I really don't know.
Have you approached any of the others yet?
Y'all are the last ones.
Yeah, I want to respond to you.
Sure. Uh, it was hard to swallow. They, uh, were not real happy. There was some pushback, especially from Cisco. Uh, there was some concern at the county level. And so it's part of what we're doing is bringing to y'all what, what we're seeing. This is just, this is facts, you know, um, black and white. The numbers are the numbers. I don't see them coming down anytime soon. It's gonna be hard for us to go, if you stop, let me tell you why I'm saying this. Look at our expenses, one-point-three million, but about nine hundred thousand of that is salaries and wages. You add the benefit piece on to that and you're close to a million dollars. So our one-point-three million salaries and wages and benefits are all close to a million dollars. So can I go to staff and say, hey, guys, I gotta cut your salary? I can. I won't have an ambulance person for any of the units. So. What we're seeing is we're seeing all across the region, um, salaries and wages going up as a result of the tightening market that we have as a result of COVID. So we've had to adjust as well. That's part of the reason why we're seeing the deficit that we're, that we're at. Because expenses are eighty, ninety percent of our, our salaries and wages are eighty and ninety percent of our expenses. And so there's not a whole lot we can do about that. We can't really cut corners anywhere. So. Going forward, my pledge to y'all would be, as a CFO, is to come to the, uh, Commissioner's Court more frequently than once every ten years, at least every other year, um, to let you know what's happening and, and what it is we may or may not need. And I think that's the only fair thing we can do.
Could you explain some of these line items?
Sure.
Part of services?
So part of what we have is we have to pay other ambulance companies if they come into the area. Because our ambulances are full, they're responding to other calls. We've got to pay ambulance services to come in. A good example of that is a company called Sacred Cross. So if they don't have insurance, Sacred Cross looks to us to make them hold.
On your chart on page seven, it shows fiscal year to date twenty twenty-three.
How many months is that?
So when I started this presentation, I believe it was February's numbers, January and February's numbers. So I annualize, so the fiscal year starts October one, October, November, December, January, February, probably five months away.
This is February's numbers?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Five months?
Mm-hmm. Then I annualize it to come up with a, a final number for twenty twenty-three.
How much has salaries changed over this period of time?
So we just had a salary increase. We had to do an adjustment. That went up twenty-five thousand. So, but if you're asking how much it's gone up from COVID, two or three years ago, we've had two or three salary increases since then, probably in the neighborhood of, I don't know the exact number, but one would bet it's probably seventy or eighty thousand dollars at least in salary adjustments. And of course, it lasts three years.
Was it a ten percent increase, something like that?
I didn't look at it from that perspective. I can get you the actual percentage if you need it. I'll tell you our average, so the other ones have asked the same thing. So our average hourly rate for the folks on the ambulance is about eighteen dollars and thirty-eight cents or something along that lines. That's an average rate. So we have people who have less experience and who have, I can't remember, EMT or paramedic, whichever one is the lower classification. They're making fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour. And then we've got guys who have been on the ambulance for a number of years, probably ten or more, that have the higher classification. They're making twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. So it averages out when you do an average, it's about a little bit over eighteen dollars an hour.
So are they working twenty-four, forty-eight, a twenty-eighty schedule?
They're working twenty fours. There's a little bit of overtime. I don't know the particulars on that to know exactly how that's, that's done, but.
What's the percentage that the insurance companies are knocking you down on your, on your rates?
So our contractuals for hospital, sorry, our ambulance is about almost seventy percent. So there's an exact example. This is from our collection company. Let me tell you exactly where it is and show it to you on page five. Don't mind, I'll walk over distance. So this is actual information from the company that we have called MerchCon. So our average charge is eighteen hundred bucks, and our average reimbursement is five hundred and forty-six. And that comes out to about a thirty percent collection rate is what we're seeing. So about a seventy percent contractual. And I will tell you this, healthcare and ambulances are just like that. It's an odd industry. You don't get what you're paid for, and somebody determines what it is that you get.
So you're charging eighteen hundred, fifty-nine dollars to travel eighteen miles.
That's on there, yes, sir. There are some that are longer than that, and there are some that are less than that, so.
Every truck that we run runs at an advanced life support level.
Yeah.
As opposed to.
I've been in.
But they run at that level rather than a basic level. And they do not run the highest level, which is medical ICU level. The distances that you go to Rising Star and some of the other places dictate the care.
You see it in that.
An enhanced level of care being provided between that location and ours.
I wrote helicopter seven times, forty thousand dollars to go to after a kid from murder.
Why'd you say I don't have anything to do with that?
I can't do anything with it.
But I just, I just wanted to have the insurance company that way they're not trying on that. I just like the, I had cancer treatments and not get down. I didn't know what their percentage was to not get down, but they be realistic is what I'm saying as to what your costs are.
No, I'm depending, CEO's forty million dollars a year. I mean, there's no realism in what insurance companies pay.
Now, I know that. There really isn't.
Now, and I will say on their behalf, when it comes to insurance and collections, about thirty-three, thirty-four percent is about the standard rate. If somehow we could flip our payer mix from Medicare, Medicaid being sixty-five percent of our population payers to a private pay, then, yeah, it'd be better because private pay will pay a little bit better as opposed to Medicare, Medicaid. It doesn't matter what we charge on Medicare, Medicaid, it'll pay X and be done.
And to your point about the collection, so, you know, we've got Medicare and Medicaid and self-pay people that don't have insurance. Those are our three biggest ones. So if you look at it, that's probably close to seventy percent, almost seventy-five percent of our volume. And so one of the things we talked to with the other commissioner of court, they asked about collections. And so right now, we see a little decline in our collections, so about thirty percent is where we are. I like to be at that thirty-three percent mark. But if you go back and look at what we've got open AR, we've got some self-paid accounts that are open. So been in contact with our company called MerchCon, and we are going to, and I hate to use the word, but there's no other way around it. We're going to be a little more diligent, a little bit more stringent on going after some of the self-paid accounts. We just don't have a choice at this point. We've got, you know, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of charges out there. For somebody who's used our service, we provided the service, and so we should expect payment. So we've got to go and ask for payment and try to get some of that payment. It's going to be difficult because people aren't going to want to pay it, and then they're going to come back and says we're being bullies because we're asking for payment, but we don't have a choice at this point. If we want to pick up that three percent, I really think the three percent, the third, the fourth, the third is going to come from self-pay more than it's going to come from any other place.
I see, but Medicare, you could pay as to what they get charged, and it's, and actually, there's so many types of pay. And the doctors, I know that their insurance companies don't pay you enough either. And it's hard to beat them, but they're saying, well, you know, you're just going eighteen miles.
Yeah. Before I started healthcare, I had a full head of hair and it was flax.
I understand, okay.
Do you have any more questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate you all coming. All right, appreciate it. Thank you. The board of city commission may discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion and consideration of ordinance twenty-three dash eight ninety-four. An ordinance to city of Easton, Texas, amending Article five Dangerous Buildings of Chapter five Buildings and Buildings Regulations. The code ordinance to city of Easton, Texas, by amending section five dash seventy-six, inspections and notice of abatement to provide for alternate methods of providing notice, providing repeater, and servability clause, and establishing an effective date.
Yeah, that was a mouthful. Commissioners, we have a dangerous building ordinance and a way of going about it. And what we're proposing to y'all, yeah, you will see some yellow within this ordinance, and that's our proposal is what we're changing. Before I turn it over, Tony, really what this serves is, we're trying to make a cleaner method and a better method to, if we have to go down this route, that we are giving the homeowner every opportunity to fix what we're, what the issues are. So we don't look like, you know, we're just coming in and trying to take their homes in this.
So commissioners, this basically is, the portion of this that we're wanting to adjust is as far as notification. When we have buildings here, there are plenty that Terry's been working, and we are trying to make sure that before it gets to a point where we have to bring them to you, when we're looking at dangerous buildings towards an abatement or condemnation type of, of hearing, is we want to make sure that we've afforded the homeowner every chance we can for notification. It starts with Terry doing the code ordinance notifications that we do for violations for every other thing. But when we were looking at this ordinance and talking with Eileen, we saw that there is no concrete in the ordinance, steps and specified ways of notification. And so to make sure that we don't go too far without proper notification to property owners, we want to make sure that we give the property owners every chance that they can have to make, you know, take care of the property and bring it into compliance with what the ordinance calls for, that we follow steps as, you know, provided and suggested by the state code, state governmental code. So after visiting with Eileen, she had found that these are some specified ways, or the specified ways that we should give notification. Put notification on the property itself, post it on the, not only the door, but on the property line. Try every way we can to find any air or anything else because Terry is working some properties currently where the property owners are deceased and there are no heirs. So these are just orphaned properties that are rotting right now. And so we want to take every step. And also, if we have this in here, it's not just a suggested way, it's the way the code says you shall do it this way. And so anybody that comes in after Terry and I working this, they have a specific way of doing it. Now, in addition to what the state calls for for their minimums, Terry and I, when we work any code cases, we like to send letters, not only first-class mail, but also certified with a return receipt. So we've got one, not only that somebody has to sign for, but in case nobody signs for that one, another one that goes to the mailbox anyway. The state doesn't say we have to do the certified return receipt, but we feel like it's just another way to not only give the opportunity for them to have, to show that they've received the notification, but it covers us if somebody comes back later saying, well, I never was ever given a notification, that we can track through the USPS, yes, it was delivered X amount of times, it was returned for this reason, and we still gave you ten days after that as required by our code. So this is what we're adding to it, just a way to give the citizen, so we're not looking like some big bad guy just excited to go after property. We're giving them every chance we possibly can to make things, you know, into, bring something into compliance.
I agree. The other problem is, except for, I want to understand the bottom of page two.
It says that if a public hearing is ordered, you're going to go through even more steps to try to find somebody. Why would you not have already gone through those extra steps before? And then when you order a hearing, the hearing takes place. You don't have to do anything else.
Well, for the, with the, let's see, what section were we talking about?
Very bottom of page two. It said the public hearing is ordered.
Now, you're going to go to the Eastern County Real Property Record. You're going to go to the Record of Eastern County. I would thank you to have already done all of that in your original search.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we would, because whenever we're talking about doing the, the notification upfront, right? This is before it even gets to you for a hearing. So with the hearing, there are other documents that we would have to send to give them notice of the hearing specifically, not just for the case itself. The, the things that we're talking about right now are, they are redundant in some aspects, but this just gives, you know, more opportunity for the property owners to get notification.
My mind is if you were trying to get ahold of me for some property, and you, you've gone through your due diligence that you've got stated in section D, and weren't able to get ahold of me, now you're going to have a meeting for the city commission, and you've been able to tell me we're having a meeting for the city commission. I've never heard of anything else before that.
Well, this also gives us a, a more opportunity and time in case we can find any other air like we've been searching for for this.
All I'm saying is, why not do all of that in the original search instead of waiting till, now we've got to go to the city commission. Let's do some more work. Do all that ahead of time. The first time they hear from us should not be because now you're going to the city commission. You should, you should do all of your due diligence. If we're going to go through this, do everything you can do upfront, and it's done, and you're going to send the exact same notice to the exact same places that you sent the notice for the problem of the property, to the same notice that they've got. And they say, well, I didn't get that. Well, we've sent the notice to the same place, did everything exactly the same. So they can't come back and say, well, the first thing I heard of this, I had to go to the city commission. I never heard of this the other day, because we didn't do that, those steps in the first part. Am I missing something there?
No, sir. Go ahead. No, you go ahead. Oh, you got it.
We do these before we even get to here. And what this is saying is that we make sure that we go through all this before we present it to you.
I understand, but you're, you're now going to have the person that we've been trying to get ahold of is now going to get a notice. We finally found them because we did these extra steps. And the first thing they hear about it, you're going to the city commission. They never had a chance to fix the problem with the property to begin with because we didn't go through those steps the first time.
Well, I believe that we are going through the steps again, but this is, when we send out the first letters of notification is for the violation itself, right? And then when we're talking about giving out, you know, additional notifications out, this is also when we're talking about doing, asking for approval to go in to inspect the property fully to see if it is truly, instead of having to be on the outside. Because if we don't, and we don't get permission for them on that also, then we're having to get an administrative search warrant on top of it. And, and for every instance that we are going to have to go after this property from it being the initial violation, for a warning and asking for permission to go through and totally inspect the building for its, you know, current state, if it's truly that far gone as we believe it is. And now we're talking about any other mailings pertaining to a hearing itself. I, I, I think when it comes to notification redundancies, a good thing rather than saying, well, I tried once, I tried twice. You know, I, I'd just like to give plenty of notification with that. I understand what you're saying. You feel like that we're not, you know, that we're waiting until the last minute to take steps that they would then respond to. But I feel like if we, if we're doing the same, same steps every time, right, through this, as far as sending notification out, they can't come back and say, well, you didn't try. But if you feel that, that the steps in E are a redundancy that's not needed.
I don't think they're redundant. I don't think you did them in the first part. I don't think they're redundant. You didn't do those steps in the first part.
Oh, no, no, we would do, we would do these every, every instance. Before the hearing, we would send them out again, saying that, you know, failure to do this in this amount of time, we are going to go to the city commission for a hearing.
Okay, okay. In, in A, right here, Eastern County Real Property Record, did you go through that in the method of notice, providing notice in the top part?
That is, that this is, we have to show proof that we went through all these records to find the people. You know, that we, that we went to the tax office, that we've pulled our utility records for any pertinent information when it comes to addresses, stuff like that.
These were, these, the, the things that this is saying.
These things that are listed down here, A through F, you've already done up in the top part.
Yes, the only things.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay, okay.
That's all I'm asking.
I have one other question. Under E.
Yes, ma'am.
It talks about if the owner does not reply or take action within fifteen days from the day the notice was mailed. So are you saying that all of these other steps above are all going to be done at the same time? Are you, are you going to mail it and then do these? So where does that fifteen days kick in? Is that?
The fifteen days is the, fifteen days from the last thing of notification that we've sent out, whether it be the mailing that went out, the, the return of the return receipt from what was sent out, because we often wait on that to give them even more time to respond to the posting of the door, posting on the property.
So it's all going to be done.
Yes, ma'am. This is the, yeah, fifteen days, we're talking about that as the last of the things that was done, these actions that were given, and the wait for the return receipt through the mail, which for code enforcement, if we send somebody a letter and say, you have seven days from receipt of this letter, right? Well, our proof of that is when the receipt comes back to us. So that's giving them even more time in order to take, you know, action on that because that's when we have our proof. We're supposed to wait those ten days from the return receipt to give them even more time.
Three, under D, it said, policy can notice at least two, twice within a ten-day period. So at the end of that ten-day period, those notices have been done. Now you're going to start the fifteen-day notice for this other part.
Correct, because that should be the last thing that goes out there. Yes.
Because that's actually, we're going to wind up being twenty days right there.
But that's kind of the end of that ten-day period is kind of the kicker, to start the clock on the fifteen-day.
Yes, sir. Because that way we've covered it in every form or fashion, short of smoke signals, trying to get ahold of somebody working a property.
Anything else? entertain a motion?
Can we make a motion that we approve? Ordinance twenty-three. I'll make a motion that we approve, let's see, ordinance 23-894 on the first reading.
A motion from Shirley and a second from Cecil to approve, Cecil, Richard to approve ordinance 23-894 on the first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Number two, discuss consideration resolution 2023-06 authorizing the application for a financial system of Texas Water Development Board for a water system improvement making certain findings in connection therewith.
Yes, commissioners, you know, we've been talking about this new water line since 2018. As you know, in January, well, you two, for Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Adole, in January, went out for bids. The bids came in a little, about 1.1 million over the original bid estimate. A couple of weeks ago, I was talking to the Texas Water Development Board, and to put in force the next round of funding, I did sign a document saying that we would possibly going to apply for those. What this resolution is, is saying, yes, we are going to turn in a application for funding. The funding will be a low-interest loan at about three, these are very, very, very rough, we have not sat down to the final numbers, at about 3.2% on $1.5 million. By the time it's all said and done, it'll be an 80/20 split, which 20% of it is taxable due to the fact that we are, we sell water wholesale to other people. What I'm asking for tonight is, is some guidance over the next month, is what do we want to do? We, we're at the point now where the Texas Water Development Board is not going to, they will give us a loan, they are not going to make up any money, even though they drug their hands due to COVID for five years on a, in all, in the scope of the world, a very small water project. And now they will loan us money for it. But what I would like from y'all is guidance, do we want to move forward? We're already on the hook for a little over a million dollars for money we took back in 2019, when this project first really got going. So.
I think if we need a water line, we need to do it. I mean, I don't like the game they've played and what they've done, and if anything goes wrong today, you blame it on COVID, that seems to be the standard deal, I mean, they just blame their ambulance problem on COVID. Did y'all hear that? I mean, that's, but I, I don't know that we've got a choice, we've got to get this water line deal fixed, or, you know, all the bragging, we can do better at water, not do any good if we can't get it.
Yes, and, 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 I mean, these will be revenue bonds, which we know where that will come from. And again, very, very, very early estimates, it will be about $7 per customer. And that's the way we will have to pay for it. If we don't move forward, like I said, we're still on the hook for a little over a million dollars for nothing. The total project's going to cost us, wind up costing us about 2.6 million, and we still have a 70-year-old water line that's in the ground.
I start to say, you suffer damage and you're.
That we're still dealing with.
The million dollars that we've already received, does that have to do with the increase that the water bills, we've had in the water bills this last year?
No, no, that was just simply due to the cost of the water district.
That's all the water district.
Yeah, the last two, that, that has, that is all.
Don swept right through that. That's all Don Griffin's fault.
But, I mean, I, you know.
That dagger.
I mean, I, I, you know, we all hate the situation we're in, we should have been done with this.
The project should be over.
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
Yes, we should have been done. I mean, in all reality, it should have been done before I even got here.
We could have been over before COVID hit.
Yes.
But we need some kind of assurances, I don't know how you can do that with those people, but something's got to give, as far, we can't go into this and have the same delay again. They've got to have some kind of a deal in there where if they don't get it done by a certain period of time, then they meet the cost or the bets are off or something, I don't know how you do that, what you can do.
We will not be awarded funding till January on this. And knock on wood, Phanbro Construction, who won the bid, so far has said, we're still good, just get the funding situation taken care of. I talked to some EHT guys Friday, and that was a question that was asked, and, and they said, no, we're still, they're still good for, for now. But it's just, you know, hey, we work for government, but the state government's a whole different level of bureaucracy, and honestly, they don't care about a $1 million water project.
Does anything do any good to get our representatives or senators, state reps or senators involved?
I have talked to both of them, Senator Byrd, Byrdwell, yes, and Representative Spiller about this, and they are aware of the dealings of the Texas Water Development Board, and it's not just us, but their hands were kind of tied on this.
Well, the Texas Water Development Board was awarded $18 million to give to people like in our situation for, we're not the only ones that are in this situation.
Yes. Okay. But tonight's resolution is just saying that we were going to file an application towards the end of the month, because I believe June 30th, all applications are due.
What's your pleasure?
That we enter into this, this consideration, yes. Apply for it.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2023-06.
I'll second.
A motion from Cecil, and Cecil, oh, Richard and a second by James. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number three, discuss consideration to approve resolution 2023-07, designating authorized signatories.
Yes, commissioners, you know, as well as any time we have a change in the commission, as we did with Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Adole coming on, we have to go through this again to update our signatories at the bank, and that's all this is, is just to make this up to date and current with our financial.
The bank wants the resolution.
Yeah.
Hello? Somebody do something?
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution to.
Motion from James to approve resolution 2023-07, designation of authorized signatories.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Shirley, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, discuss consideration of approving and planning a zoning board member changing designation from alternate to full board member.
As y'all remember, last month, we brought forth some alternates to this board, and with Mr. Adole stepping down, it is our recommendation that we make Ms. Jill Warren move from an alternate to a full member on the planning and zoning board. And you'll see her application attached on the back.
I will make a motion that we accept Ms. Warren as a full board member of the planning and zoning board. Second.
A motion from James and a second from Richard to approve Jill Warren as a full member on planning and zoning board.
How much does that pay?
Any other discussion? Same thing as mayor. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, discuss consideration of conveyance of Warner's University subdivision and Eastern Community Foundation from EEDI.
There was some property that changed hands years ago, I'm going to let Mr. Ryder Warren speak on behalf of EEDI on this.
Commissioners, this action item is to correct an omission due to COVID. Just kidding. Back in 2007, y'all probably know this story a little better than I do, before 2007, the Warner Edition was owned by the Economic Development Corporation. In 2007, we officially conveyed that property to the community foundation. I think most of you know, we have a developer who's in the process of purchasing the Warner University subdivision right now, and through all the paperwork and all the surveying, it was found, we have one piece of that property that wasn't officially, we conveyed it, but it wasn't officially accepted by the community foundation. I believe it was, it's block three, lot one, or if I was first, lot one, block three.
Yeah, it's a little bit important.
Mark Tippin calls it, it's called the mound. It's, does everybody understand?
That's where the, that's where the old college.
The old college was, instead of dragging it off, they built, they just dumped it in a hole, and that's what, but it needs to be officially conveyed. We met last Monday, the Economic Development Board conveyed it, the, the community foundation met on Thursday, they officially accepted it, and then you as the final, as the final voice of purchase of the real property, we would like you to approve these, so that will further the, the, hopefully the closing on that property by Mr. Petrov.
I'm glad that we, that we, we passed the discussion, I mean, Warner University subdivision and Eastern Community Foundation from the EDEDI, approve that, please.
I'll second it.
Motion from Richard and a second from Shirley to convey this property to the Eastern Community Foundation from EEDI. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
U bet. Item number six, discuss consideration of the Eastern County Museum request for funds from the hotel motel tax. Thank you, Ryder.
Yes, sir.
Tell Jill we said thank you, too.
She'll be thrilled.
Earlier this month, myself and the mayor met with some members of the Eastern County Museum Board to hear their request for funding from our hotel motel tax pot. They need, they're, they just need some help with this whole situation that they're in. There are a couple of representatives here from that board, if y'all have any questions toward them. Where this money would come from is our hotel motel disbursements, we would up that. We, we are planning to have a surplus in that budget this year with about 4, 44,000 in surplus already. To take, my recommendation is we start them off at $1,500 a month, as we do with other organizations in town, and basically just help them, they provide a, an essential part, I mean, they are an essential part of this community, they do a lot for our community. Do we want to let anybody from the board speak, or do you have anything to say on that?
No, I don't want to let them speak. No, they can't just a minute. What, this is free money, and one of the things we've got to do is JJ, you can tell that 44,000 is unallocated, he is going to look at for the budget in October to increase everybody that's already getting money. And I think we need to come up, JJ has already had this in his head to do, and we've discussed this, and it was actually his suggestion, but I support him in doing that, and all the commission to also sign on to this deal, that that money is free to us, it's what our people come to town, is, we brag about Eastern, and the reason why people want to come here, and everybody's doing a great job, including that board, this money brings heads to the beds, and that's what their group does, and they've got several things planned in the year to do that, and I, I think it's, I don't really understand why they haven't already been part of this process, and that's, it didn't happen, and whatever reason, but, you know, normally we wouldn't do this till the budget year, but JJ and I talked, and I strongly recommended, and he agreed, that we start this right now, and get them starting in July, start getting them the money now, there's no need to wait till the budget year, and then when we talk about increasing, increasing, however, that percentage goes across the board, JJ has not looked at that yet, and, and that's what this money is free, and, and I think we need to, in the letter that we send to them, and send to all of these people that get the money, is we need to inform them that, you know, here's, here's what it is today, be careful how you budget this, because if we start losing hotel motel dollars, that number's going to go down. Now, we don't want that to happen, I don't believe that'll happen, but they need to know this, this money is coming from that, and, and that's how that'll go, but I feel pretty secure in where we are. What they budgeted is not, they didn't budget enough, so there's even more than 44,000, if the plan, the trend goes where we're going, so that's even better, and they can do even more and make those go up. So I think it's a wonderful deal, I'm glad y'all finally came to us and got that done, and now when y'all would like to speak, just knock your lights out. Come on, Robert, come on! All of them, we thank you for, and if y'all, do y'all understand who this man and woman right here is? That's Tony's in-laws. You wonder why Tony's been such a nice guy tonight, and there's a reason, his mother-in-law is here. We appreciate what y'all are doing. Y'all have anything you need to say that we didn't cover?
I got one thing to say, with the accepting this money, there, you have to turn in a quarterly financial report to us, just like everybody else does, so that way we kind of know, know how it's going. And while we're on the subject of hotel motel, if you, if you want to go ahead and vote on this, that's fine.
Let's get this one to pass this now?
Yeah, if you want.
I'm glad that we, we approved the Eastern County Museum, the amount of $15 per month, $18,000 annually at this time for the hotel motel tax of Eastern Texas.
A motion from Richard, a second from James to approve the $1,500 a month, $18,000 a year to hotel motel tax. Any other discussion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
And while we're talking about hotel motel tax, Leslie and I have been talking a lot, you know, the whole object of hotel motel tax is whatever we bring in, it's supposed to go back out. We, this next budget cycle, we're going to try to come up with some options and, you know, try to, there's money in there built for people that, if you know are having events in town, that they can request these funds to help promote their events and stuff like that, but we're going to bring some options to make sure that everything we're bringing in, in that pot of money is going back out into our community, so, that's all I got to say, I'm sorry.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here and doing that, and, Dave, and your briefing.
I'll keep this very short, we saw the first set of plans to, for the people that have agreed to the clearing. Never in my wildest dreams that I would think this would be such a big issue with some people to clear, to get access to clearing to property along the river, but it is. We are fixing to cut it off and put it out for bids, whether they're in or not, just because we're falling behind. Waiting on the final report for the flood structure, infrastructure grant, really, the, if y'all haven't been out to the airport, you need to go check out that project of what they did, they put lime down this last week, we're fixing to get ready to start paving out there, and it's, it's, Tech Stop was very, very happy with how it was going, there were some pilots in there the other day that I was talking to that were just, they were just all struck about how good our airport is going to look and the things we're doing out there, so, that's all I got, really.
Any questions for JJ?
Thank you.
Tony?
Commissioners, for the month of May, Terry started out with 48 cases, he opened 34 new ones, closed 28, with a total at the end of the month of 54 cases. Out of those opened, there were 45 total violations, out of those closed, there were 28 violations. We've got two junk vehicles, we had four citations that were issued for the violations listed at the bottom of the chart. Two cases were reported for back taxes, he'd sent out four annual notices, and assessed fines the amount of $1,336. And we didn't take anything back in, nobody sat out in jail this month, that month, so that's pretty much where we're at as far as for violations. Any questions on violations? Any questions on violations?
Today, that we've been having issues with, when, I guess when he received notice of lien, he felt the need to contact us out of the woodwork, and he has, he is catching up on his past due fines as we speak. That was, that happened this morning, yeah.
Yeah, Terry had found a, another, you know, we talk about looking for heirs and other people, you know, connected to people. He happened to find, and I've forgotten about that, thank you. He'd happened to find a daughter to this gentleman that was at another address in another town. And so he sent that notification out, but we had already gone through all the places that he was at, or listed at. And we'd already abated the property and have liens on it. And so, yeah, it's nice to have somebody, you know, pay for what we've had to clean up for them. Now, that's it as far as code enforcement, if nobody has any other questions. For development here in town, Ryder didn't mention, but there's a construction company that has acquired some property back behind the Dodge dealership. They are Troy Construction. They are doing projects for, is it for DOT, or what are they exactly working on?
I don't know exactly who they're selling it to, but it's on top of top line.
Yeah, so. That may have been what it was, I can't, I can't remember exactly what it was to them. But anyway, they're using Eastland as a transfer point for materials and for workers and stuff. And so they're using that area temporarily back behind the Dodge dealership, since they, they do work on, you know, everywhere between DFW and other side of Ellen. So we were a convenient location for them right off the highway, and so they've taken, you know, ownership of that for a short amount of time. In addition to that, we've got the, the digital set of plans for H T O came in. I know that there's been some, some talk online about that, saying that the city was holding them back and stifling any type of progress when it comes to commercial businesses. I promise you, that is not the case. We've been waiting on their architects to finish the, the plans. They are sending a hard copy of plans for myself and Fire Marshal Joe to go over for approval to, for them to get started completely redoing that. So, and it's, according to the plans, that building's going to have a completely different look, and it's going to look very nice there, situated between Sonic and Eric, and we're excited. We also have some people that are redoing hess, have sadly closed a couple of months ago. And we've got a, a restaurant that's going in there. They are not ready to fully announce what they're going to do, but it is going to be something new. So we're excited for that. I think that's it so far, yeah.
Chief Pitt, please report.
For the police department, we had 250 calls in May. We had 61 reports generated out of those calls, 277 business checks. We made 15 arrests, 21 cases were filed with the district attorney's office. We issued 111 citations, 302 warnings for 413 traffic contacts. Animal control side of things, she issued six citations with 18 warnings. She had 127 calls for service, we had 21 dogs, or animals impounded, and seven animals adopted. Kate's in K nine school right now, getting another certificate for that, so we're excited about that. We had our first deployment of our tire deflation spike, successful deployment. So we were excited about that, we're able to bring a pursuit to a stop without having any injuries or anything. We've got a new patrol sergeant, as most of you know, Samuel Joyner has been accepted to the Texas DPS. He's going to be going to do that in August. And so we hired a guy named Ronnie Almond, some of y'all know him. Kind of excited about getting Ronnie. Ronnie is an Eastland ISD graduate of 1988, still holds some records for track stuff up there, pretty good athlete. Ronnie has an associate's degree, 23 years of law enforcement experience, master peace officer certificate. He's a law enforcement instructor, can standardize field sobriety, sexual assault, family violence radar, and teaches many other classes Ronnie will start tomorrow, so we're excited about that.
Was he here before?
Yes, ma'am.
If you get in a foot pursuit of somebody, send him. Where were those pikes, was that in town, where those pikes were deployed to?
It was on the interstate, DPS got in a pursuit, and we deployed spikes and shut it down.
Is, is an tire deflation device the same as spike strips for lanes?
They're a very good tool, and it really, it helps us eliminate a dangerous situation, or at least minimize a dangerous situation to some degree.
Any questions for Chief Pitt? Chief Wilson?
Good evening, thank you. The fire department, Eastland Fire Department attended 78 calls for service in May. That's, that puts us at 2.51 calls a day out of our station. 59 of those calls took place within the city limits, 17 took place in the county. So about 65%, 64% of our runs are within our city limits. We had two mutual aid events, we went and helped our neighbors. We didn't get a chance to install a smoke detector this month, but we are continuing to push that program. We had 14 calls after 10 o'clock at night and before 7 o'clock in the morning. They were a little bit more, they were a little bit more active at night than we were last month. We attended zero structure fires, and as I'm looking at that, I think that might be a miss. I think we, we did have one. If not, we're going, we'll, we'll see a huge spike in next month. It depends on what day that, that, that structure fire fell on. We had one grass fire, we, we had one vehicle fire, and we responded 40 times with the EMS crews to assist in our first responder program on medical emergencies. In conjunction with that, we attended 13 motor vehicle accidents, eight public assists, and 13 fire alarms or some type of investigation. We had no either extracational or technical rescues this month. We had two hazmat oriented events, and those were gas leaks and it called in. Right now, our membership rolls at 26 for the fire department, and I have two applications pending for our next meeting. So those are our statistics for May.
Who is this young lady?
So I would like to introduce our newest staff member. She began her career in the fire service at 0800 this morning. This is firefighter Lillian Brummett. She joined our Volunteers September of 2022, came in, wanted to know how this worked and what she could do to be a part. And in that short eight months, she has accomplished all the state required in Texas Department of Health certifications, and is now our A shift firefighter on her two-week orientation on H5. And so she is being challenged with a lot of information in two weeks, and then she will take the reins on A shift for the city.
A shift, what is A shift?
So we have three platoons on a 24 on, 48 off, A, B, and C. And it's just the one to designate what, what shift that is, the third rotational shift. So she's.
So we run every third day.
We've heard Chief Wilson talk about growing our own people.
Yeah.
There's our first one.
What he's got going is working.
And he made you come to a city meeting.
This is pretty boring. This month in Breckenridge, we were invited, six members traveled to Breckenridge, and we attended an oil gas well fire management class. It was taught by a company named CUD. I'm not real familiar with them, but they're ex-employees of Boots and Goops and Rent a Dare. Very good, very beneficial class for our members. We had six attend that. Our tough tablets are now installed in the apparatus with the hotspots. We are now live, and we are in the process of beta testing the CAD, making sure we're getting all the little IT things work out. And I'm forecasting within the week, we will be 100% live on the computer rated dispatch system, which will eliminate, our goal is to eliminate the radio traffic on overly congested radio traffic. They're making EMS systems making 2,000 calls. Cisco and Eastland are averaging 800 to 900 calls, Rangers 1,200 calls. All these calls are coming out on one channel, and we're working diligently to try to break free some of that airtime and move over, and this CAD system is going to be a huge component of us doing that. I pulled the tapes of two working structure fires, in which within the first four minutes, which is the most incremental, which is the most important tactical decision-making, and there's been multiple EMS calls dispatched right in the middle of those calls. And so for safety, and, and we're, we're working diligently to break off that channel and try to figure out a way for safety. And the last thing I have is during this month, I fired my fire instructor certification, which makes us eligible, and I'm working through with the city manager on the logistics. We will be applying through the Texas Commission on Fire Protection to be a certified training facility, where we can host our own and certify our own and continue that program.
Good. Have some more training. That's good, that's good. Anything else for Chief Williamson? Thank y'all very much, appreciate you being here. Good to meet you, good to have you on board. Anything in municipal court? All right.
Move adjourned.
Second, ma'am.
Richard's the most, Jill adjourned, Shirley's the second. All in favor, say aye. Pose the same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.